I'm Susan Stomp. I am the moderator tonight for this candidates meeting that's being put on by the League of Women Voters and the Redwoods. And would like to thank Elizabeth Moody for making the arrangements for it. (applause) Also here from the League tonight is Annie Laser, who will be the timekeeper, who will keep the candidates to their time limits. And Claudia Giuliani, who will be handling the microphone, because between the opening statements and the closing statements, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions. So to get the program started, the first panel we have is the Mill Valley City Council Candidates. There are four candidates for two seats that will be up for the election in November. So starting alphabetically, we have George Cohen, who will open with a two-and-a-half-minute statement. Each candidate will have an opportunity to make a statement of two-and-a-half minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. It's George Corden.[90.54][90.54](laughter) But when you're not famous...[94.54][94.54](laughter) Yet. I've lived in Mill Valley for 45 years. I raised my children here. I started my business in San Francisco, and over the last 12, 13 months, I moved it to San Francisco... Excuse me. I moved it to Mill Valley from San Francisco. So I'm actually now not only a resident, but I'm a local businessman. I've run for office twice before. I was opposed to the Miller Avenue Precise Plan, and subsequently to the Miller Avenue Streetscape. Not totally, but in aspects of it. I was in China this year, in the summertime, and as I was coming back, running through my mind what I'd seen, I noticed that China was going to create cities for 250 million people in the next five years. If you have never seen a city with 30 million people, China has 20 of them. So they're actually, they're not very pleasant places. They're the most polluted places that you've ever been in your life. As I came back, I realized there were elements in Mill Valley that needed seriously to be addressed. One of them is our literally out-of-control pension costs. We now owe $19 million in unfunded past service liability. It means that we're going in the hole, and we're going in the hole at the rate of an additional $1 million a year. We need to remove ourselves in order to not become a China circumstance. We need to remove ourselves from A-Bag and get away from the Plan B area. And we also need to take a serious look at what we can do to Miller Avenue based on the money that we have available. Thank you.
Thank you, George. The next candidate is Dan.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Dan Kelly. I'm running for Mill Valley City Council. I moved to Mill Valley 14 years ago. My wife and I have four children in the public schools, two at the middle school and two at Ed and McGuire. And I was involved in the Community Vitality Committee for the General Plan Update. And what I saw in that process was people coming together and people having their voices heard. And I think it was a long process. For me, it was a great process. I got to see disparate neighborhoods and other opportunities that I think we're really taking advantage of. My wife and I fell in love with Mill Valley when we moved here. And I've more and more, I continue to fall in love with it every day. This campaign season, I've been doing a lot of walking and a lot of riding my bike and meeting people. And the more that I'm out walking around, the more that I'm seeing what a great place this is to live. And my number-one goal is I believe that Mill Valley is great. I believe that it only stays a great place if you continue to work very hard at keeping it that way. I'm very interested in community values and community spirit. And I think my way of looking at that is, when you talk about small-town character and what that really means, it means people that care about each other, people that know each other, and people that take the time to know each other and learn more about what people are interested in, and then taking that information and making sure that you're using that. And one of my goals as a council member would be to make sure that I'm the ears of the community, the ears for all segments of the community, to make sure that people's voices are heard and that we then bring that into the process. Now, my background is as a lawyer. I was also a stage manager and a theater major when I went to college. One thing that those things have in common is that I believe in consensus building. I believe in going out and making sure you get the information that you need to make the correct decisions and make smart decisions. And at the same time, knowing that if things don't work out or you've made a wrong decision, you've got to be able to say, "I made a mistake, and I'm going to fix it." I do litigation, but I've said before that I think it's the most inefficient way to solve any kind of problems. I'm more involved in trying to mediate and trying to take the two sides to every story, because I think every story has at least two sides to it. But by having an open mind and open ears, you can take those and put it together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. The next candidate is Jessica Jackson.
Hi. My name's Jessica Jackson, and I'm running for Mill Valley City Council. First of all, thank you all so much for hosting this event. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. A few months ago, I came by and I visited the Redwoods, and I took a tour with Barbara Solomon. I got to see the plans for the renovation, check out some of your awesome programming, and even enjoy some tasty treats made from your garden. We are so lucky to have this vibrant community of active and engaged residents here, and I couldn't help but think that the Redwoods is truly a jewel on the crown of Mill Valley. I grew up right down the street from here on Sycamore, and even then, I knew how lucky I was to live in this community. So when it came time to raise my daughter and for her to begin school, I couldn't think of anywhere else in the world that I'd rather her grow up than right here in this wonderful community with the same opportunities that I'd had as a child and near my mom and sister, who still live in the community. As your councilwoman, I would work to protect the small-town character that we all love and help plan for future growth. I have three main areas I've identified to work on. First, I want to focus on communication. I think it's important to ensure that all residents have a solid chain of communication coming from the city. Second, I will prioritize transportation and preserve our wonderfully walkable and bikable streets. Third, I want to continue to prioritize emergency preparedness by developing effective flood mitigation and also ensuring that we're protecting our fuel breaks that keep us safe from wildfire. As a parent, Sunday school teacher at Mount Tam, and volunteer in the community, I believe that I'm tied into the pulse of Mill Valley. I think my skills that I've gained as a human rights attorney will help me on the council to thoroughly research issues, solicit community input, and make difficult decisions. I will bring economic diversity, generational diversity, and gender diversity to the council. I have demonstrated my commitment to public service through my work assisting death row inmates in their appeals, fighting for prisoners' rights, advocating for clean air and clean water, and facilitating judicial nominations. Now, I want to invest my energy in this community, the community that I grew up in and that we all love. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. The next is John McCollum.
Good evening, and thank you. First, I apologize. I've got a bit of a cold. I've been shaking hands and kissing babies, and somewhere in there, I caught something. So apologies for that. So Mill Valley is a wonderful place. We have great schools, physical beauty, a vibrant arts community, a great library and community center, the Redwoods, and best of all, a balanced budget. This did not happen by accident. We have an engaged public and a history of skilled city council members who have led us to success. We also have our challenges: local-serving businesses leaving, development pressure, the need to deal with poor roads, flooding and sea level rise, and personal safety concerns. Mill Valley has our tradition of city council members serving only two terms. We lose two very experienced city council members this November. I can see one out there in the audience. And the remaining three in two years. And that means, that's why this election is so important, because we're really at a crossroads, a major turnover here. So, why me? I offer our vote as extensive public experience. I know housing and land use issues, having spent the last six years on the planning commission. I chaired a major subcommittee of the General Plan, Mill Valley 2040, and also served on the Miller Avenue redesign to fill the needs of pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. So having presided over nearly 200 meetings, I had done my homework, listened, built consensus, and gotten results. In addition to extensive public service experience, I also offer our vote as business experience. I'm a recently retired partner, having spent 35 years at Press Waterhouse Coopers, a large CPA firm. I managed a 300-person team and a budget for success and built consensus and buy-in on tough decisions. And I think these skills transfer very well to the public sector. So I'm running for city council to ensure responsible management of the city and its budget. I want to improve our neighborhood roads, continue emphasizing fire, public safety, and sustainability policies, and increase public support for the arts. I support housing options for varying income levels and seniors, but don't support large out-of-character projects. I am proud to have received the endorsement of Mayor Andy Berman and 11 former mayors, the Marin IJ, the Pacific Sun, the Marin Professional Firefighters, the Marin Association of Realtors, and in total, over 250 individuals. The IJ pointed out that I lead the field in experience. My wife Cindy and I have been proud Mill Valley residents since 1904. Our two kids graduated from Mill Valley Public Schools, and Cindy is currently, actually, a Tam High School District Board trustee. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next phase of this is for you to ask questions of the candidates. And Claudia has a microphone, so that you can be heard. And we will start with a response, a one-minute response of the candidates, and we'll start with Dan Kelly. So is there a question that you have for the candidates? Let's see what's there. See what's over there. So... Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Well, yeah. Well, this is a general question. I've forgotten who mentioned it in their short talk. What are we going to do about transportation, especially in view of an emergency that might be like an earthquake that might happen? How are we going to get out of town?[776.13][776.13](laughter)
Dan?
That's a very good question. And I think, looking at Mill Valley from even from 10, 15, 20 years ago, how it's changed has struck me as being, there's a lot more trees and a lot more people, a lot more buildings. And I think the one thing that we have, and I think I'm very proud of, not that I was part of it, but I'm very proud to be living in a town that has, is a very involved emergency response group, and a number of groups that are all working on those issues in terms of how to get out of town, how to have safe routes out. I think that's extremely important. I think it's something that steps have been made to clear areas. I know that the municipal services tax that is up for renewal, which is one of the issues that I'm very interested in, it's up for renewal in 2016. It pays for roads and for sewer, storm drain work. And that's where we're putting resources to build up the streets and to make them safer and easier to pass. I think that we're going to continue to do that.
Thank you, Dan. Next is Jessica.
So I think that the traffic is being caused by both people as well as the infrastructure. We know from studies that people are getting an average of 12 trips a day into their homes, whereas our road is designed for six. So we all need to start doing our part and making sure that we're biking and walking whenever that's possible. In terms of infrastructure and emergencies, we are a cul-de-sac community, so there is only one lane in and out, which makes traffic difficult. I definitely support the general plan mobility element, and I'd like to look at other solutions and work with our emergency respondents and figure out what ways we can help them to develop more effective routes for people to get out in the case of an emergency.
Thank you, Jessica. John?
Jessica doesn't seem to want to go near my mic. I don't know why.[904.51][904.51](laughter) Okay, so there are two parts to that question. Let me cover the emergency part first and see how much time is left. Mill Valley has a really outstanding team that has been working on dealing with emergency response for a long time. There's the emergency response group. And it's looked at as a kind of a national standard, the various drills that we've done as a city. I don't know if you remember, the last one was up by Old Mill Park, but there was actually a helicopter up in the air announcing it, so all the residents can hear. We have steps, lanes, and paths, which are unique to our town, and they can get you out of the hills faster than actually driving. It is true, we have just two main roads out of town. I was on the Miller Avenue Street redesign, and there's a part of that street that's only going to be a single lane in the future up by the lumberyard there. Thank you. And what they had done when they designed that is they created it so it can be turned into two lanes in the case of an emergency. So the city has a deep understanding of the importance of keeping us safe.
Thank you. George?
Well, you might not be able to get out of town.[971.82][971.82](laughter) And in that context, you probably, if you... The next time KQED does a fundraiser, they have a backpack, and it's three to five days' worth of emergency supplies. I have one hanging in my front room. But the reality is, if something substantial happens here, it's probably going to be Bay Area-wide, and you may not have any place to go. So you probably should try and figure out, I think we can contain any problems in the town, but you might be left on your own for a bit of time, so that may be your responsibility.
Thank you. Do we have another question?
Yes. I'd like to have each of the candidates respond to the question, "How many city council meetings have you actually attended in the last year?" Thank you.
Okay, this will start with Jessica.
Okay. So one of the great things about our city council meetings is that they're now available for everybody to watch from the comfort of their own home on Channel 27 or online. I certainly have taken advantage of this. I have a nine-year-old, so I've definitely watched many, many of them online or on the TV. Since I began this race, I've made sure that I've gone to all of them and that I've stayed as late as they go, which sometimes can be as late as 1:00 a.m. So I have been going to them.
John?
So let's see. First, I would say that I'm involved in two elements there. As you may know, I'm on the Planning Commission. I'm actually the chair of the Planning Commission currently. So that's two meetings a month, so that's 24 meetings a year. And in terms of a contest, in terms of which group runs later, Planning Commission or City Council, I'm thinking maybe Planning Commission would win that. On the City Council side, I've appeared before City Council on a number of occasions in connection with planning activities. I've watched all the meetings in the recent past and was very involved in the General Plan activities, and therefore attended all those meetings. So I can't give a precise number, but plenty of meetings, have a deep understanding of how City Council works and, you know, the process.
George?
Actually, quite a few. And sometimes you get a little sleepy waiting for the whole process to take place. You're usually there for a specific reason, and sometimes it comes up very early in the proceedings, and sometimes it's not till late, and you just, maybe the best thing to say is, "I think I know what I'm getting myself into."
Thank you. And Dan?
Well, I haven't kept track of the number of meetings that I've attended, but when I was working on the Community Vitality Committee and on the Arts Subcommittee, those were two sets of meetings that also involved certain meetings at the City Council. I've also attended a lot of Planning Committee meetings, one, to know what's going on on that side of it, and two, because there's certain issues that have come up with friends that were at the Planning Commission, where I was watching that process work. And one of the things that I saw in that process in that particular one, and I give John a lot of credit for that, for running those meetings, is that the process worked because people were there, participating, and bringing up issues. Most recently, at the most recent City Council meeting, I know there's an issue about the ordinance of not parking a truck in front of your house. And I think, one thing that I think this City Council has done, has been very responsive when something comes up and it's not working the way it was initially intended, and this is not an ordinance yet, it's just a proposed ordinance, they've been not too proud to say, "Okay, we need to stop, take a step back, and think about it." I think that's what I've learned from the meetings I've attended.
Thank you. The next question. "One way to reduce fossil fuel emissions is to encourage bicycle riding, and Mill Valley is an ideal town for bike riding. I would like to ask the candidates for their estimates of when the holes on Miller Avenue will be filled, and the cracks, and the ruts, please." Did you get that question? Okay, John's the first one to respond.
Okay, so on Miller Avenue, a couple of things. First, I was on the committee that dealt with Miller Avenue, and there are excellent bike lanes which are going to go the full length of Miller Avenue. They're six feet wide, they're going both sides. I can't wait for them to be in place. I ride my bike socially currently, and it's a little treacherous to be on that steep slope. In terms of greenhouse gas emissions, you need to separate, you know, commute-type travel from recreational travel. And in the commute area, it's pretty interesting. Our town has a significantly higher percentage of people who actually use bikes for day-to-day commuting than on average. In the United States, 0.5% of the commuters actually ride their bikes. In Mill Valley, it's 3%, so it's quite, much larger. I think the Miller Avenue, and the status of the Miller Avenue roads is that they're in a detailed engineering study right now. That contract's been let and is in process. When that contract is complete, they'll know precisely the details to issue the detailed bids, and we can get the thing going. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. The next person is George.
An easy and not-so-easy question to answer. When will they fix the potholes on Miller Avenue? I've been asking that question for the past seven or eight years, so I don't know. I do ride my bike. If you're looking at how to reduce, for instance, I calculated when I moved my business from San Francisco to Mill Valley, that I saved 384 gallons of fuel per year, and probably another 2,000 or 3,000 in commute costs. So basically, if you want to reduce the stress on the planet, go local and do it in such a way that you're not harming, or you're harming as little as possible.
Thank you. Dan?
Well, I share your concern about greenhouse gases, and I'm lucky because I live on Dorset Lane, which is in the flat areas, and my kids go to the middle school at Ed and McGuire. And we ride bikes all the time, and when they go to soccer, they ride bikes as well. I work in the city and I take the Golden Gate Transit, and I think those are things that we can encourage more, people to do more. I'm also excited about Miller Avenue, because getting to downtown, which I can walk downtown, it takes a little more time, and I can ride my bike down there, and I've done that, but I'm more of a recreational rider. I'm looking forward to that being done, so that it's going to be safer. Because right now, I know from a lot of friends that ride bikes, that the bikes move at a very fast clip, and it's very dangerous for kids to be there. So when I'm with my kids, we try to stay away from East Blithely. We can't ride a bike on that street. But I am looking forward to it. I think the City Council has put a lot of stuff into plan to really address the issues and really work on that, making it a more bike-friendly and a walking-friendly place. I think that's an ultimate goal.
Thank you, Dan. Jessica?
So I think John addressed the question about the timeline for fixing Miller, and I would echo the sentiment that I'm really excited that this happens and that it happens soon. You know, one of my favorite things about moving to Mill Valley from the city is that my mom gave me a spare key to the house and a bike. And she said, "All right, get yourself to your activities, get yourself to school, drive yourself, bike yourself over to your playdates." And it was really liberating, but it was also reduced the traffic, because she didn't have to drive me all around. So I'm looking forward to when we have those dedicated bike lanes on Miller, so my own daughter can use them. On the note of bikes, I would also be interested in looking into a bike-share program that we can bring here to Mill Valley. I live up in Enchanted Knolls, and if I could just simply walk down the hill and hop on a rental bike, bike downtown, I would be able to use bikes quite a bit more.
Thank you. One more question.
I have a question. I'd like... The mic is here. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Just to preface to my question, I noticed that I heard you say that you do watch the city council meetings on the TV on Channel 30. I'd like to know your position on the Community Media Center of Marin and their need for emergency funding for the next three or four years. Okay, we start with George.
When we talk about community media, are you referring to the television system on Channel 30?
There actually are three channels. 26, 27.
There actually are three channels, and this is the Community Media Center for Marin, located in San Rafael. And they have Channel 26, 27, and 30. And so it's educational, public, and government.
Okay. I'm a great supporter of circumstances like that, and should they need funding, I would take a very careful look at it, and I would probably say yes.
Thank you. Dan?
Well, I think what I know about the particular issue, first of all, I'm a big supporter as well of public television. I think what they're doing there is great. As I understand it, there was some sort of a glitch, that it's not a long-term funding problem, but more of a bridge for the next three or so years. And I know the idea was trying to get the various communities to contribute to make sure that they can keep operating, and I believe that Mill Valley is behind that 100%. I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's, in a situation like that where an entity needs help, and it's something that's very focused, and everyone can recognize the importance of it, I think it's important for Mill Valley to lead. And I think, actually, we are doing that with this particular project.
Thank you. Jessica?
So I was actually at the City Council meeting the other day when they had the presentation about the TV and its needs and how I had fallen a little bit short of the funding it needed. They showed this wonderful video of everything that Marin TV brings to our county and how it integrates students and allows people to express ideas and people to tune in to their city government. And I can't tell you enough how much I value that resident engagement and that constant flow of information. I definitely support what the Mill Valley City Council did in approving that funding.
Thank you. John?
So I also support what occurred at the last City Council meeting, and I can tell you from personal experience that many people watch that program. And the way I know that is because planning's on every other Monday, and I go to Mill Valley Market on Tuesday, and people say to me, "I saw you last night, and you did this, and you did that." And it happens constantly, not on the odd occasion. I'm thinking that Judge Judy's ratings have dropped as a result, but, you know, it works. People watch it, and I think that's very valuable in terms of us continuing to keep our small community together, because things happen at City Council and planning that people care about. So I do support the short-term support, economic support.
Well, we were quick on that response, so I think we could get one more question squeezed in. And this one would start...
I was driving through the gridlock of Tam Valley Junction the other day, the other morning, actually. I go to a meeting every 7:00 a.m., and there's a sign that says something about high-density buildings on the road, just a short distance from the new stoplight to the old stoplight on Shoreline here. And that scared me, because I thought, "We've got so many cars now, we can't get through the city in the morning, and why are we promoting high-density..."
Why are we supporting high-density growth? Dan?
I think one of the things about the Tam Valley issue is that light is actually backing up traffic, and I know Caltrans is trying to make that work better. It remains to be seen whether they'll be able to sort that out. But I think the sign about against high-density housing is based on the suggestion that, since that area's not as built up, that if someone were to build something, that's where they would be looking for it. And I don't... And I don't agree that high-density housing is the solution. I think here in Mill Valley, there's not a lot of spaces to build things, and I certainly don't support large projects that are, like what we've seen in Corte Madera. That just doesn't fit here, it doesn't work here. So I think the sign is not, I think the sign was someone trying to express the concern that it shouldn't be done, and I would tend to agree with that.
Jessica? I have the microphone, so I'd like to ask my question. You have to answer.
Three more.
Thank you. So first, I'd like to clarify that, you know, Mill Valley, city of Mill Valley and city council has jurisdictional boundaries over what we can and cannot address. I think the specific site that you were describing actually falls within the county. The city of Mill Valley took steps to mitigate, to prevent ever having to have that high-density housing come here to the city. We simply don't have the land for it, and it would, as you suggest, raise some serious traffic concerns. So the Mill Valley City Council has opted out of having a priority development area, which would be targeted for that high-density housing. In terms of the traffic, you know, I think it's always been bad there, because it's one lane, so in the mornings, it's specific traffic going on as the commuters are leaving. And the ways that we can best affect that are by taking the bus where we can, taking the ferry where you can, and encouraging your neighbors to do the same.
Thank you. John?
So, you know, I'm just gonna say that Jessica got that exactly right. There was a proposed preferred development area, PDA, down at that location, and it has been removed subsequently, so there is no planning for dense housing in that area. It's also not part of the city of Mill Valley. As Jessica pointed out, the city of Mill Valley's general plan has precluded those large-type developments, and the traffic light is a challenge.
Thank you. George?
Which brings us to a very interesting thought. What is Mill Valley? Does Mill Valley end at the high school? Actually, everybody thinks of Mill Valley, in fact, people in Tam Valley talk about living in Mill Valley. This is one of the things. So what we're really dealing with is even in the unincorporated areas, what goes on there impacts the city. And one of the things I'm advocating is that we remove ourselves from the A-BAG group and the planned Bay Area. If you pick up this at the counter on the way out, it'll give you a better idea of the kind of things that we're up against. One of the things we don't want is we don't want somebody coming in and telling us that because they've made a decision, they're gonna put a very large unit or a series of units in a place, and then you and I are gonna suffer through the traffic mess that it creates.
Thank you. We have now come to the closing statements. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to make a closing statement, and we'll go in reverse order and start this time with John.
Okay. It's a pleasure to be here at the Redwoods. My wife Cindy and my daughter Erin have great memories from the National Charity League volunteering for the monthly birthday dinners, and especially calling bingo, that was something they really enjoyed doing. It was also a pleasure to be in the planning commission and be able to approve the Redwoods' housing overlay in the general plan, which includes adding 49 additional affordable units to the 60 that are currently here. That's what just happened in the general plan process. So my message to you is basically that I bring both business and public experience and commitment to the city. Both my wife and I take great joy in public service and very much would appreciate your vote. By way of personal introduction, I was born in the Bay Area, I was born in Oakland, my parents are from Ireland, so I'm a first-generation American. I was lucky enough to come out of Oakland and go to Cal, and that changed my life, it gave me the opportunity to, you know, expand my horizons dramatically. And when I finished my career, I chose to basically do two things. I'm very interested in continuing to serve the city, and I'm also teaching at Berkeley now, so that's important to me. I'm a big 49er fan, which has been easy lately and not so easy for the 10 years prior to that. I hike and I bike, you know, I like to cook. Probably I should cook a little less and hike and bike more. I enjoy travel, and so we're longtime residents here, we love our town. I've got a flyer in the back, if you're interested, it has my webpage on it, there's a lot of information there, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you. Jessica?
This has been a great forum, and I think that you've all learned a little bit about me and why I'm running. My deep roots in the Mill Valley community, combined with the multitude of experiences I've had here as a child, as a parent, as a renter, as a homeowner, as a student, as a professional who both works in the city and stays home, they all bring a unique experience and would make me an effective council member who understands the various perspectives of Mill Valley residents. My professional experience as an attorney and experience in the nonprofit sector give me the skills necessary to be an effective council member, and I'm a seasoned public service who has demonstrated commitment to public service and serving my community. I'm fully committed to this town, and I really want the opportunity to serve you all on the council. I'm the only candidate who is endorsed by both of the outgoing council members, Mayor Berman and Vice Mayor Marshall. I'm also endorsed by 10 former mayors and many community leaders, as well as our Congressman, Jared Huffman. Please join them in supporting me and vote Jessica Jackson for Mill Valley City Council on November 5th. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dan?
Well, I believe in Mill Valley, and I believe in the people that make it great. And I've spent, last couple of Fridays, actually, I've been out on the corner with Seniors for Peace. That's a perfect example of the dedicated people that make up Mill Valley, that make it great, and that make us the envy of other places across the country. It's people that have that kind of commitment and that kind of interest in making Mill Valley, keeping it great and making it even better. And I think my 24 years as an attorney, 12 of them as a partner, have put me, given me a lot of experience with people, and a lot of experience with difficult situations and finding creative solutions and ways to optimize what we're doing and make things better. I ask for your vote on November 5th, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. George?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you. If I'm elected, there are going to people, there are gonna be people in town who don't like me. And the reason that they won't like me is because I'm addressing issues that are sacred to them, and they'd just rather not talk about them. When I tell you, or when I say that the city of Mill Valley owes $19 million in unfunded past service liability, it means that the city can go bankrupt. Possible. Not probable, but possible. So I'm sitting here today saying, if I'm elected, I'm going to address that issue. And it involves city employees and some of the processes they're not gonna agree with. So if you elect me, please don't let me, please don't let them bomb my house.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your participation.